I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Perrysburg Board of Education. Mr. Juror, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Ms. Larimer.
Here.
Ms. Menke.
Here.
Dr. Reford.
Here.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Here. I invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you to the Commodore Building tonight. We thank you for attending. We care about the safety of our students, staff, and families and guests. Please note that there are exits on both the east and west side of the cafeteria. In case of emergency, an AED is located just outside the cafeteria doors. And if in an emergency you needed the address, it is 140 East Indiana Avenue. Next item on our agenda is to adopt the proposed agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bennington, Ms. Larimer. All those in favor? Can I do voice vote, or do we need to do individual? Let's just do voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. The only item on our agenda for today is 3.1, Discussion Regarding Operational Levy Options and Timing for 2025. There was a presentation. Now I'm not loading right. Okay, well, we'll do that later. I had it, and now I don't have it. Interesting. Does everyone else have access to the presentation? Because suddenly I do not. Okay. I'll keep going. There it is. So at our last meeting, which was also a special meeting, we were talking about the permanent improvement levy. And Ms. Menke brought up the idea of having an operational levy on the May ballot. And because it was a special meeting, that was not an item that could be discussed at that meeting. And so we've called this special meeting, I've called this special meeting to discuss that. And so I guess I would give the floor to Ms. Menke to kind of have the chance now to speak to that idea.
Okay. First of all, I would like to say that I think it would be prudent for us to put on both the PI levy and the operating levy in May. The PI levy announcement should be made with an accompanying list of planned maintenance improvements and their associated estimated cost to help sell this. One is with the operating levy. We are willfully choosing, if we willfully choose to miss the first opportunity, it only reinforces to the community and risks creating the impression to our voting public that the operating levy is not as crucial as has been conveyed. Two, establishing the operating committee at our previous effective millage will send a strong message that we are interested in upholding our district's financial underpinnings. Three, this allows us to have time for much-needed dialogue with our community that we have talked about, that will be necessary to move forward with any future funding. The last three defeats point to our new reality that we can no longer assume passage of any levy or bond issue we place on the ballot. We have to understand that the interest rates and rate of inflation over the past several years has significantly impacted our voting public in their financial flexibility. The disposable income that was there is greatly diminished or no longer available. Our ask has to be reasonable, that is supportable by the majority of our taxpayers. We need to continue to look at trimming overhead and other areas of cost savings. I know we all wish, as a board, to have our dream scenario, but we are dealing with a functional reality. And we just need to lay it out there for our taxpayers. And I know we don't enjoy, and sometimes we feel like it's a waste of time to put out the minutia, but I think it is very important to get our point across. And with that, yes, I do believe that we need to put an operating levy on for May and not wait until November.
Good. And did you, and you insinuated this, I think, in your comments. Were you, did you mean the 13 and 1/2 million that would go on, or?
Yes.
Thank you. Others, discussion? If there's questions about some of the information that was provided for background?
I guess do you have a, so do you have a sense, if I may, of four-year, five-year continuing? What's, what's the structure that you think, or that you would propose?
I would propose four years.
Thank you.
So back in December, we, we had briefly discussed this during the meeting. And at that point, there had been some discussion about wanting to wait until November and make sure we had more time to listen to the community and more time to consider, you know, what, what cuts, not only what cuts we wanted, but what cuts would be permanent versus those that may have such a detrimental effect. Things like hiring freezes that will have a detrimental effect on students over time. To consider those. And so at that meeting, there wasn't any move towards putting, you know, this quick turnaround to figure this out. So that's why I had kind of, I'd like to suggest that we talk about is, we'd have about two weeks to structure whatever levy we'd want to put on the ballot in May. Are we interested in doing that? And then I think to get more into the details, Ms. Menke suggested the 13.5, but we're certainly not, we don't have to do that much, and we don't have to do that little. I mean, that's what we've lost, but we've also made cuts. So I don't know, I guess I wanted to, there's a lot to consider. If we want to go with the May ballot, then we need to talk a lot tonight. If we're not sure that we want to do that, and we are going to look instead to November, then that's why I thought it might be worth talking about that issue. What are the limitations? What's the possibilities of running a campaign? I know we can get it on the ballot with enough conversation and special meetings, so.
And if I may interject, from a timing standpoint, to get it on the ballot, probably what I'd have to do is I'd have to have the resolution of necessity at the regular meeting next Tuesday. And then I'd have to get a fast turnaround and a special meeting to do a resolution to proceed. So we have time, but it's going to be, I'm going to, I'm going to, we'll have to push it because the county auditor technically has two weeks. Now, Matt will do it more quickly for us than that, but just so, just so you know.
Wouldn't we be able to do a resolution tonight if we came to consensus?
No, I don't have, I don't have the language. Well. So I do not have the, yeah.
But I know you have the numbers. So that's what I want to get clear in my head. Because I've heard different things, so I figured if I'm confused, which of course is easy to do, but if I'm confused, there's probably others that are confused. So I'm going to tell you what I understand, and then you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So beginning January 1st, we were, we lost our 13 and 1/2 million dollars. So the solution was to take 7 and 1/2 million from our savings to get us through the rest of this school year, which takes us to June 30th, right?
June 30th.
Okay, I'm doing pretty well. All right, and then from July 1st to December 31st, that's where the $6 million in cuts come from, right?
Tom, will you put up Slide 16?
Well, he even knew the slide number.
Okay, so this, hopefully, Sue, this illustrates your point. The orange, and you see where the orange and blue connect. That's January this year, okay? At that point, I take it back. So that's January next year. So the, the orange reflects the rest of this year, so, and then at the next fiscal year, right? So that, what starts in when? July, that's the next fiscal year. We're, the first of that fiscal year is without, again, half of that levy. And then if you pass a new levy, it's effective January 1st. And the blue line reflects a new levy. The orange continues if no new levy, and of course, no additional cuts at this point. Obviously, we'd have to, because obviously, we're in, you know, we're, we're bankrupt. So, and you know, remember if I did in the forecast, I put 14 million in. And the reason I used 14 million, it wasn't completely random number. Obviously, it's close to 13 and 1/2, but I used 14 because that gave me a level of comfort that would get us through fiscal year 29, right? Well, and you can, and the question you can ask, well, well, what's a half a million dollars? Well, over that time period, it's about 2 million, right? Accumulated, accumulated timeframe, so take, take that blue line and drop it down a little bit. And so we still could probably squeak through fiscal year 29, but we're squeaking, right? Instead of ending your fiscal year 29 at 13 million, we're probably down closer to 10 or 11, which makes me worry about January and February, you know, payroll, right? So 14 gave us a little bit. And the other thing this is that keeps the 6 million in cuts that we're already making, and as Tom, as we noted up here, that also assumed we built in there no new teachers and staff. So as we add students, now, I take it back, no, Sue Strong a word. We've put a little bit into the forecast for compliance reasons. We had to add intervention specialists or speech pathologists or something because of the numbers. But essentially, that is, if our student growth continues, there's no staff built into those years, right? So that's why the, the slight decrease in cash balance over time, it's just slight, right? If we have new staff, that accelerates that. So this is kind of, 14 million, I think, is our best case, and this best-case spending to get us through 2029.
So at 14 million, and we're on, and I'm on the blue line, that still means basically no new teachers and staff with the 6 million that we've cut?
Yes.
Wow.
And that's why I chose the 14, right? That was kind of, I feel, you know, you can argue, okay, can we squeak by 13 and 1/2? Probably. But that's, you know, but again, that, just think about that. That's not, that's not just a half a million a year. It's, you know, half a million each year, so it accumulates. So I'm not suggesting which number, I just wanted to make sure, when you think about these numbers, what a difference it'd make, you know, 13 and the, and the, and I, and the other reason I picked 14 is because essentially, that millage is the same as what fell off, right? Because evaluations increase, we can put the same millage back on. So essentially, level millage increase, but a little bit more, a little bit more revenue.
Okay, so then, all right, I'm understanding that. But how is asking for 14 million going to be accepted by our community, which just said no to 13 and 1/2? I've seen a disconnect there. If we're trying to listen to the community who said, no, we're not giving you the 13 and 1/2, why would we come back and ask for more and make that logical argument?
I think the, the last levy did ask for the 13 and 1/2 million that we had that was set to expire, but then we asked as an incremental levy to go up. So it was a combination of those two things.
Okay.
As, as the note here, if we would have asked for the 13 and 1/2 million to continue, we would have gone to the voters and said, we're going to ask to have the levy renewed, and we're going to make approximately $6 million worth of cuts if you pass this levy. And so the board back in June talked about those and weighed those options and felt, you know, let's, let's do what we've done before with the incremental levy. And, you know, clearly, that was not, you know, supported. So, so that's, so this is a different levy than what was proposed in November.
So this is just a flat levy?
Said another way, we don't need the incremental piece of it because we have $6 million worth of cuts that will stay.
For, for a while, till we get to 2029.
We get to 20, yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or, you know, obviously, growth, you know, we just got to understand the impact that growth will have.
Right.
And the incremental levy took into account growth. This does not.
And you're basing these assumptions based off of how school funding is working today?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming essentially no additional help from the state.
I'm, what if I said I'm assuming less help from the state, given recent comments? Thank you, comments as early as last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a challenge to predict where we'll land. In the last two biennial budgets, I think there was a commitment to continue with the fair school funding and continuing to implement it. So when we talk about that, what we're, what we're talking about is the state fully phasing it in. They've done it, you know, 33% at a time with each biennial budget. So we're 66% of the way there. So this, and when the state goes to fully fund it, they're also raising their inputs. So it's based in part on the state average teacher salary, the state average principal salary. All that kind of data gets updated, because right now, they're operating on data and funding that was two years old. So we get updated, as you know, every single year with property taxes. So the state is going to be asked to fully fund the incremental, or I'm sorry, to fully fund the fair school funding plan, which benefits Perrysburg because we're a growing district, and we'll get full funding for all the students that are in the district instead of partial funding that we receive now. And the state updating its inputs brings in additional revenue from the state. So the conversation about this is that, well, if the state doesn't update their inputs, every school district in Ohio is getting their inputs updated every year because valuations are going up in every community, and local residents are being asked to pay more when the state is being asked to pay less. So the new speaker, Speaker Huffman, who just took over the day after their first session, this is a quote from him, saying that, yeah, we're not, you know, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to be able to do that. So it has created some, it has created some backlash. This was a follow-up article where there's some members of the GOP, which is President Huffman's, or I'm sorry, Speaker Huffman's party, are saying, we don't agree with that. So, so this is something that we're beginning to see. You know, the future's a little bit more unclear than it was before, based on this new input, so.
So when, sorry, Mr. Huffman, I mean, thank you for that. When, when does that clarity come in? Clarity come in before March?
June 30th.
Thank you, June 30th.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom. I expect this right to the 12th hour, you know, midnight on 12:30. You know, by, by law, they have to have an improved budget. And I think it's, you know, it's going to be that kind of battle. And just to, just to reiterate where, where our focus, our forecast is on this. Within the current law, the floor is funding at 2020 levels. They can fully implement the fair school funding plan, but if they don't increase the base costs, as Mr. Hosler indicated, essentially, we get wealthier, but our costs are, in theory, the same. So we're actually, our dollars per student's going to go from $1,600 a student to $800, right? And, and maybe I can, I've, I've done a white paper on that calculation. I can present to the board at some point in time. But our funding, essentially, is going to stay flat, because we'll, instead of being, if you will, kind of capped where we are today, we'll be on the guarantee. Because our, our funding will not fall below 2020 levels, right? So our local funding is at 21 levels now, and our state funding will be at 2020 levels. And put that in perspective, I anticipate this year, our total state, this is foundation, not, does not include state share of local taxes, be about 12, 12.7 million. In 2029, that'd be in 12.5 million. So $200,000 difference. That's assuming there's no cut, only that they kind of maintain status quo, if you will, right? So if they don't change the 2020 law, that's kind of where, where we are, if that makes sense.
And that was part of the five-year forecast projection? So, and you presented all of the base cost information, so we do have that.
Yeah, and again, I've done an analysis that I'm, I'm geared up to share once we get into hearings on this to show how, you know, if you don't update, fully funding, implementing the fair school funding plan is important. What's more important is increasing the base costs. That's a bigger factor for us, because again, as Mr. Hosler pointed out, we're getting wealthier on paper, okay? I'm not going to, and, because our incomes are going up, our property values are going up, yet they're saying the cost to educate a student is the same as it was two, three, four years ago, which we know is not correct.
So the, the layer of uncertainty there is certainly that we would need to either make more cuts if the state doesn't fulfill its promises, I'm going to put that one out there, that we would either have to make more cuts, or that, as the state has kind of suggested, that we would have to go to the local taxpayer for more money at that point. So that, I, that's an uncertainty that makes me concerned. And I don't know, Ms. Menke, what your intent was, but my concern is, is that we could go in May and ask for 13 and 1/2 million, find out that the state has changed its funding for us, and we're going to be in a situation where we have to go back again in November. And I don't know if the intent was to ask for a second levy then, once we're able to listen more, learn more, kind of plan out further. Is, is the intent then in November, we would go back with another levy at that point?
I would say if the discussions with the public heads in that direction, then yes. There are conversations that we need to have with the public are going to be telling of what we do in, for November. And also, I mean, really, along with that, what Randy has said, what happens by June 30th, that's going to tell us what we need to do too. I mean, this is just, this is a reality of being a board member. You have multiple funding areas that you're jockeying, and where it's coming from, and, and what's being said by the government and by your public. Like I said, it's just, it's a reality of how you take care of things financially.
In light of the, I was so hoping that Huffman wouldn't be Speaker. But in light of his comments, and the ambiguity that he's thrusting all public schools to be in until the wee hours of June 30th, does it make sense to wait and not put an operational on now in the spring and wait until the fall so that we know what we are definitely working or not working with? I mean, if we, sorry, if we don't, if they do that horribleness of not updating the base costs, which, that seems so ludicrous to me that they would do something like that, but not beyond expectation, because they still haven't figured out what the Deroff case means. So if they're going to penalize public schools even further and not increase that base cost like they should, then that might change what we need to function with. And we won't know that until June 30th, right, Randy?
I think one of the questions, though, you have to ask yourself is, are we willing to risk that? If we can get in May back to 13.5 or 14, I, I mean, personally, I would feel better about where we're going. If we wait until November and put on an amount that our public is not willing to say yes to, then there's further cuts. I don't want to go there.
I think one, and I'm going to go back to something that Ms. Larimer said. I, I think one of the things that concerns me right now is that when we say that the public didn't support the levy, why was that? I think that there's a lot of answers to that, and I'm not sure I know fully the answers to that. So I, I'm not convinced yet that if we put 13 and 1/2 million on the levy, that, that that's going to pass. I, I don't, I don't know yet. And, and that's, so I, whether it's 13 and 1/2, whether it's 14, my concern is, is we go and we ask again without having done the community engagement pieces, without really hearing, without having a, a long-range plan. You know, one of the things we keep hearing is that we need to have a plan. This feels to me like half a plan. And, and I'm not, I'm concerned whether or not the voters will support it. And then if we go back in November again with the same thing, then it could cause more trouble. So that's, I, I have actually, in my head, been playing around with the question of, is it time to split this levy in two? Do we go with a smaller amount in May? Something like this, I'm going to say 9 and 1/2 million, which would allow us to not have to make additional cuts going forward. It would not help us long-range, but it would get us through, and then in November, once we have a better picture and can truly do a plan, put a second levy. My hope was that a smaller levy would pass. And then if we set those at different years, we wouldn't be asking for 17% of our budget again in the future. I think that that's, to have two smaller levies is what I've been playing around in my mind for the last, you know, however, you know, 48 hours that we've been thinking about this. So I, I am concerned that we don't know if the 13 and 1/2 or 14 million will pass. And what trust with the community will we lose even further by putting this on the ballot?
Is there any validity to asking for a different kind of levy? Instead of asking for a property tax? This go-around, is there any benefit to asking for an income tax? There's a different collection rate on, between the two, right?
Well, okay, first of all, I think your timing's going to be tough on an income tax for May. Second of all, we already have a half percent traditional income tax. To get the equivalent of 13 and 1/2 million dollars, that's 3/4%. And you could obviously have an income tax and a property tax. Again, I don't know what we have the time to get the Department of Taxation's numbers to do an income, income tax, but I don't know. You know, maybe it can be done. But just put in perspective, so you're looking at 3/4% or a percent, the equivalent of 13 and 1/2 million dollars. That's the last number, so that may have changed a little bit. An income tax could only be in quarter percent increments. Is that right? Quarter percent. They figured it out in eighth, but you can only ask in a quarter. So, and then, you know, typically, in communities like ours, it's very unusual to have an income tax because of the high, relatively high income. Normally, income tax is more favorable in communities of high land value, low income, farmland, essentially. But that's fine, we have an income tax, I'm, I'm happy that we have it. But the other half, part of it is, the income taxes that are getting passed today are, are earned income taxes, which are essentially taxes on paychecks versus a traditional tax, which pays taxes your whole 10, you know, your whole 1040 tax return. Now, for us, to convert that half of percent to earned income, you're talking about, again, going from a half percent to 3/4% or so. So again, those are big lifts. I mean, there's certain things the board can consider. But it, it, we need to, we just do a lot of work. And recall, I think, last spring, I did, I did a chart for, it's one of those things there, income tax versus property tax. In this community, it's about, you know, half the people are going to win on either side of that, right? If you're relatively high income, low property value, you want property tax, right? If you're relatively, you know, low, lower income but high property, you want the income tax, depending on, are you, you know, where? depending on are you, you know, where your wealth is tied up. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy. But if you're at the median in Perrysburg, that is, if you're at 135,000 to 140,000 household income and 325,000 to 350,000 home value, anything there and above, you want property tax.
Okay. And I do think that we've heard from people in the community about income tax, but I don't, personally, I think that's one of those things that I wanted to take to the community.
Yeah.
Because they aren't, they weren't very successful in the last round of elections, if you look at the levies across the state. So it's a hard, that's a tough lift.
Yeah, the reason why I asked is when you look at where our levies have strongly failed has been in our rural areas. And I think it's horrible what this country does to our farmers and how they are taxed to death and all of that. That just really needs to get fixed. There's no excuse for it. And I just wondered if maybe that would help or?
Income tax, in our farming country, income taxes are generally favorable.
Okay.
Because as a farm, a business, you know, everything you do on that farm essentially is a write-off. So generally, as reportable income are less. I'm not, I'm generalizing here, right?
Right.
Right? That's why it's a benefit in those, where you have lots of land value. And right now, land values in Ohio are very, very har, high. And I talked to some farmers and what they're able to lease and sell land for is incredible. Now, their wealth is tied up in that land, right? So it's not necessarily in cash. So it's an important question to discuss, but if that's the route the board wants to go, I think to Susan's point is that it's going to take a lot of discussion to get us there.
Well, maybe that would be a fall thing then. Rather than trying to figure it out in this rush. And you were talking about two different ones. Maybe that would be something to look at more closely in the fall as an option? And then more, something more traditional that we could do of a smaller nature? Because I like your idea of splitting it into two, and that gives kind of, it's kind of like a compromise between what Laura's asking for, that we do something now with, because we know some of what we need now and that, like you're suggesting, nine million, so the nine million would definitely help cover some of our future costs for the rest of this calendar year. And then to, and then by the fall, we'll have plenty of time to see what the state is going to do. You're awfully quiet.
She's waiting to jump in. I was getting, I'm listening, I'm listening.
Slide 13.
So my question, when you talk about, Randy, you said three-quarters for income tax, three-quarters of a percent?
That's the last time I had, that's the last time I had a calculator, about three-quarters of a percent.
Additional to what we already have is what, a half? Is it a half or a quarter?
It's a half.
So on top of the half that we already have.
So this, from the forecast, and if you look at line 6.010, it's kind of in the red, the ugly red numbers, right? That's the, that's the year-over-year, in this case, deficit, right? So, and I think we'll end up this year a little bit better than a negative 3 million, but next year, even with the $6 million in reductions, we're looking at 9 million. And we end the year, cash balance of 13, which makes me nervous, but that's doable. And then the next year, it's almost 13 million. So that's the number I'm looking at when you talk about breaking the levy up into smaller pieces. Certainly a strategy, just recognize, though, you could be, you know, needing new funds in 2027, right? Depending on where you are. And obviously, we can run any scenario you want to play with there, but that's, that kind of gives you the...
In my scenario, we would have the smaller, well, an amount on the May and then really have a good, well-thought-out plan for the November levy. They would both be this year.
See, and I felt like, so, and think about what's going to, what would happen. Remember, because of the calendar year versus fiscal year breakdown, whatever we pass in 2025, we'll get half of it next school year. So we don't get, we get full collection the following school year. So we end up, if we, whatever we pass, we'd get a little bit, you know, half here. And so it's that, it's that next year, which ends up being the concern, the 2027 year is the year of concern. And obviously, what we have up there for '28 and '29 can't happen because we can't run a negative cash balance. That's not, that's not legal, so.
So I agree with, boy, it would be great to pass something in May and bring some financial stability to the district as soon as possible. No doubt that that makes this job a hell of a lot easier. Like you said, this job isn't going to be easy, you know, regardless. It's more important to me to get the, whatever we do to make sure that this ask is right, rather than it's quick just so that things get easier. There's $6 million worth of cuts that we know we have to do this year that the administration needs to work on, that we need to approve. We know that there's another, I might get the number a little bit wrong here, nine and a half, 10, $9 million worth of cuts, that we got to start hearing about what that looks like, too. It's time and attention on that work. There's an oopsie contract that needs to be renegotiated this year. Time and attention on that. There's the day-to-day, you know, still, kids are in buildings, teachers are still teaching. There's a PI levy that we, it felt like there was alignment, you know, we're moving forward with a resolution of necessity that we're going to need to approve and do that. Where I start to get concerned is what I'm hearing about is the potential for two to three levies in 2025. And when, Ms. Larimer, I think it was, I forget how you worded it, I liked it, it was, you know, are we suggesting that we wait and see what the fair funding, what the state funding does before we make a decision? And my reaction to that, when you said that, was, well, it depends on how easy you think levies are to do. It depends on how easy you think campaigns are. And there's strategy that we're talking about, there's tactics, how much should it be? What type of levy campaign, or what type of levy should it be? But then there's also the logistics of this. And when I refer to logistics, it is the, what is the campaign committee's ability? What, how well are we, we, the district, you know, there's this, we're not the campaign committee, but what does one, two, or three campaigns look like in 2025? What's the funding? What's the ground game? What's the engagement there? What's the messaging with everything that has to be done in campaigns? They're not easy to do. They're not easy to do. So that's asking of a lot there. So again, I just, I encourage the board as we think about this, and your music was distracting me a little bit.
I'm so sorry. I can't even find my phone, which is usually pretty unusual. I'm sitting on it. That's why it was so quiet.
And I also think about what are going to be the changes in this community that we're going to experience here over the next 10, 11 months? We've got people out there that still don't believe that these cuts are real, that we're actually going to be doing $6 million worth of cuts. Still hearing about that. And this isn't a, let's bring the pain by any means. This is just, let's, we got a reality we have to deal with here. But at the same time, we've got another side of the community that's saying, well, you're not doing enough, or there's still more that you can do. So when you start to play those two sides, it's like, one side isn't going to necessarily support a levy until we really show the cuts, until that, you know, until we make a level effort to make cuts. Because that was my takeaway from the last three elections, was it's time to cut, and that's what's happening. So are we in a position where we bring some cuts, it brings some stability? But then at the same time, come out in November, you know, one reason to do this sooner is some of these folks that are big on school districts, and when they start to see us talking about redistricting and talking about shorter days and less opportunities for their children, we're going to lose some of that support, too. So there's just a lot that has to come into this decision that really makes me nervous about doing something fast, as much as I'd like to. And I'll, I'm on the campaign committee. If this, if this board says, let's do something here in May and let's go, then we'll go. But I think we only get one shot at this. I really do. I really think if some, if we go in May, PI levy doesn't pass and/or some form, whatever those amounts of an operating levy doesn't pass, I don't know what the point of doing anything in November is. We will, but it gets incrementally even harder then. And we've been talking about community engagement. We've been talking about getting out in front of all kinds of people to hear what this legitimate ask needs to be that would pass. And I think we need to do that work.
Plus, you've got three board seats up for election this fall, too. So that's going to add.
Time and attention.
Yeah, that's going to add a lot of issues for lack, I can't think of the word that I want to use, but adds a lot of issues to it as well. Gosh, I'm really in a quandary because I can see the advantage of taking it and making it into two smaller ones. I think there's a lot of validity to taking a breath and getting the community engagement group going and really finding out what, if anything, the community will support. Because we haven't put anything on the ballot these last three that was excessive. It was what we needed to really continue the excellent work that Perrysburg does. And I fully stand behind those, especially the one in the spring last year, which I thought was one of the most brilliant levies and asks that I'd ever seen, and that actually lost more than the one in the fall. And we didn't lose by that much this last one, so. And that's the Pollyanna attitude towards it. So I, I agree with you, Eric, on that, is that I'm not really solid on what does the community want us to do at this point? Where do they want us to go? I mean, we as a board see in our committees the work that y'all do and what money is needed to continue that work and get the results, the superior, superior results that we get in our district for what we use and what we have. And the community is saying no. So what is their yes? I don't know that either. I don't know that either, really.
I think one thing I wanted to point out, you know, we're using May and November, we're talking about the, you know, the two previous levies and then the most recent. So I think it's important that not all levies are the same. So operational levies are viewed differently than permanent improvement levies and bond issues. So, you know, our run-up is, you know, two failed bond issues and an operational levy. So those are all, those are different, and they're asking for different things. I think we have to be careful in not to recognize that a May election is a very different election than November. It pulls out a different group of the community to vote. And that can have an impact on whatever the message the community may be sending when you have 5,000 people coming up to vote versus 18,000. So I think that's important to keep in mind, that this May is a primary, gubernatorial primary, perhaps, depending on how things shake out. So it is a partisan primary locally, you know, will there be enough candidates to run to trigger a primary for local candidates? So this May could be a very low turnout election. And, you know, and so when we talk about low turnout, you know, we're looking at, when, and we, we've not had a lot of experience going off-cycle, we call it, during primaries. So this past March was the first time that we had done that since 2007. But in March, there were a total of 8,000 voters. And that was a presidential primary. So that, in primary speak, that is the high watermark of what we can expect showing up to the polls. We don't have, I didn't pull the data from the last primaries that weren't presidential, how many voters, but it will be less than that number. And so I think that, that is something to, you know, to reflect on as you think about this as well.
Thank you. That's great points, because I was, I thought about that earlier. This, this could look like a get out of the vote campaign, which feels expensive, feels like a lot of work. That doesn't stop us unless you're not funded for it. But what you also triggered there was that we just did our last levy in a presidential campaign, right? The high watermark for turnout. There was turnout. My understanding is that the turnout was exactly what we had expected it to be, probably exactly what we had hoped to be, and we still lost, which again, points to the importance of the ask for me. Getting the ask right.
So am I hearing you, Eric, that you would rather wait for the fall and ask once rather? Oh, look at that smile.
Well, yeah, yeah, the levy that I want is the one that'll pass. And I don't know that I'll be ready to say that we've got the one that'll pass by, in two weeks. That's what I'm saying. I would love, I would love to get something in in May. Would love to be able to bring, again, like I said, stability to the community. We could start having the better discussions about what these cuts are going to look like. We can have better discussions with boosters organizations that are so graciously offering their help. We can have those conversations. But if it fails, those conversations look a lot different for the rest of this calendar year and going forward. So I'm not here to make, I'm not here to make a decision tonight. I'm here to tell you what I'm thinking, but that's what I'm thinking.
You know, we've talked about this so many times, that we're between a rock and hard place, no matter what we do either way. You know, I'm concerned, obviously, about the possibility of the large cuts proposed or, which will more than likely happen to Ohio's public school funding. I mean, Speaker Huffman wasted no time putting that out there. We're pretty much counting, not just we, but those affected by fair funding, are counting on that to be followed through as promised. I don't see that happening. That's a huge concern. I think we'll know more, like you said, at the last hour in June. My concerns, again, are too many levies at too many times, too many asks. I mean, we heard that all the time, you ask for too much, you don't have a plan. Well, we have a plan, state's not helping us with it. You know, I think people are starting to understand how school, public schools are funded and how this affects our students, you know, that we were not a guaranteed district, you know, that are, it's right here, you know, they talk on, they're going to have to rely more on the community to fund public schools.
Which slide are you looking at?
This is, it was just that article from, it was in the news. It's 16, it's, I mean, how many articles are in there? Or how many, you know, that hit the news immediately. You know, we can go back to 1991, we talk about it all the time, all the time, about how, you know, the way Ohio funds schools is unconstitutional. We started to get there partially with the fair funding, and it's going to be yanked away, not even at current levels. I think it's important that we do follow through with what we talked about, having conversations with the community. Unfortunately, the election calendar doesn't help us at all, and I don't feel, I don't feel we're ready to put something on in May on top of a permanent improvement. You know, because we would have that, plus this, plus need something else in November, and I just think that's too much. As much as it's needed, I just don't think the community is ready for that. And I just don't want to be rushed, and I don't want to feel like we're just putting something out there to get something out there and to get it wrong. I mean, that's, those are my personal opinions, coming from, you know, 30 years in education, living in the district for 21, seeing the writing on the wall, you know, from the state and, you know, they don't have public school in there, they just don't have what, they don't want public school funded the way it should be. And just make the gaps bigger between the haves and the have-nots, and I'm just not ready to rush something.
In preparation for tonight, I looked back at my notes from our meeting right after, that we had after Election Day in November. And it was, we need to, we need to listen, we need to hear what's going on, we need to take our time trying to figure out what our next steps are. I think that language, Mr. Bennington, that you raised, the right ask. I am not convinced that 13 and a half or 14 is the right ask. I'm not, I don't know what the right ask is yet. And, you know, I was looking at that. We have not placed a levy on the ballot during a primary that... We have not placed a levy on the ballot during a primary that passed since 2000. I realize there haven't been a lot of them, but I think we also had a couple failures there that led us to maybe believe that wasn't a good idea. And it is a limited turnout. We, we've always said we want as many people to be able to have a voice in this as possible. So I'll, I'll be honest, I, you know, I started playing around with this two levy thing in case there was a sense that we wanted to put something. I'm not, I'm not hearing that from a majority of us yet. Where I started was we need to get it right. We need to listen. We need to look at what the reductions were, what the long-term effect of those are going to be, what we're going to need in the future, what the state is doing. And that's not going to come together in the next two weeks for me.
I hadn't really caught that data that you said on here. I'm looking at slide 29 right now, and you're right. Looking at the May elections, that's, that's not a, a favorite election for us. And we usually don't do those May elections. I mean, that's something that you've stressed many times, Tom, that not to do May elections. And, and I kind of, I, I definitely agree with Lori that that would be the potential of three asks in one year when we know we've heard that people get tired of us asking. And so we think it's a good idea to ask three times. That seems a little tone deaf as well. But then again, I, I look back at what we've done over this past year, and I thought all of these were very well-designed, very thoughtful, and asking for what the district needed for its rapid growth with, with your two guidance. So I, I really am kind of reeling at this point, not really understanding what the community wants. I mean, of course, everybody wants lower taxes and they want not to have to be spending so much money for schools. That's not always the individual district's prerogative to not ask for money because the state doesn't fund the schools correctly. So that's not always on us, but can there be an agreement between the community and the school districts that are suffering like we are to understand that it takes money to run our schools and to do them well? The whole argument that Perrysburg doesn't have to be as excellent or to be less excellent, that just doesn't compute to me. I mean, these are our kids. We need to give them everything that we possibly can, every opportunity that we possibly can to excel. It's a rough world out there. So to keep taking opportunities away from them, that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I think that that all, all that rolls back to say is that at this particular moment, I am confused what the community wants us to do. We were, we've certainly shown the numbers courtesy of Randy explanations courtesy to, to what it takes to do and to be Perrysburg and be a Yellowjacket. And now you throw in the monkey in the wrench with Speaker Huffman. I say Huffman all the time and it's Huffman. Speaker Huffman. And that's really going to send districts reeling. It's not just us. I hope people understand that this isn't just us. It's TPS. It's, it's, I'd see go down the street, it's Bowling Green, it's
Washington Local, Anthony Wayne, Savannah,
Yes.
Owen Tangi, Columbus City.
Yeah.
I mean, it was slide eight you had asked, but just that last. To not fully fund the plan could cause the schools to rely heavily on property taxes, which will then lead to more levies, which will then be shut down due to already having high enough property taxes. In short, Huffman proposed cutting at least 650 million. Let me repeat that, 650 million in public education spending in this year's General Assembly's budget. That was from January 11th to 2025. Ohio Capital Journal.
Public education.
Public education.
It'll get diverted.
While he'll turn around and give a billion of our taxes to the voucher program.
Private school funding, correct. But I would be clear, 650 million in public education spending.
Which is what they are constitutionally required
To do.
To do.
I think Ms. Benning, you were trying to hop in.
Yes. What we have done in the past is not working. And I know we are looking at, we have to move forward no matter what Ohio decides. So let's not look at what we've done before because, like I said, it's not working. We need to break it down. We need to do small steps. I mean, yes, we have examples here in the past. It's mainly bond issues that didn't pass. The one operating levy that didn't pass, when you look at it, when we asked for more, it did pass. Us passing up any time, I would rather hear our public say no to what I proposed versus not putting anything out there. Because if we wait for the legislator to make legislative body, bodies, I should say, to make up their mind, and we have to put a higher amount on, we think, to function, we are still passing up a base amount that would be functional versus cutting later on to something that is not functional.
But my question to you is that we asked for the 13 and 1/2. Yes, it was a, an incremental.
It was an incremental, and that's what the public, I mean, we had people stand up here and say that. We also had people stand up here and, and say that nine years, eight years was, was too much.
And we also had people come and excoriate us.
One person at a time.
Because people want us to have a plan, so we offer a plan and, and that got shot down. That's why I'm saying, I understand the confusion here because we're getting mixed messages. We give them a plan, we give them a long-range plan. We show them what the district needs. We show them what the state is not doing, that it's falling on us to support. But they keep voting it down regardless of what kind of levy it is. So that's why I'm saying, I don't really understand where the disconnect is. What do, what did they want us to do? Because I think we've had three excellent options put out there that shows planning, that shows long-range planning, that shows, hey, if we do this, we'll have less asked, we won't be on the ballot three times in one year. And that got turned down. I mean, there's lots of things that we did in response to what we were being told, and that got shot down. So where, where do we go from here securely in asking, can we actually, as tough as it was to run a campaign, the last one, underfunded, overburdened for the people who were trying to support it? Can we do that with two levies at the same time? That sounds like a major ask of the people who work on the Campaign Committee. And Eric, you would be able to speak to that better. I, I've not been on the board when we've had two levies at the same time. So I don't really, I don't even know what that looks like. Has that ever happened, Tom, when you had two levies on at the same time?
I, I think, I think you'd have to go back to, let me see. I think I have a slide that has that.
Of course you do.
Last time Perrysburg had two issues on the same ballot was June 3rd, 1980.
1980? Oh, my gosh.
They both passed. It was operating and PI. And that's the history going back from, you can see the 70s and eight, you know, 70 to 1980 there. That stretch represents that, so.
I mean, and one thing I have on my list to do is to, to reach out to whomever on the Campaign Committee, because I'm, I'm concerned about our level, our, the, the ability to campaign just for the PI levy, which should be
Do we still have a
Pretty straightforward.
Do we still have a committee?
The great work that that committee has done. I don't know the answer to that, and that's, you know, that's outside of this room, right? These are two separate things, but so, yeah, I don't even know who the, who the names are right now.
I think one of the things that I'm concerned about in going back right away, you know, we've made the $6 million in reduction. The, the big cry was that we needed to reduce, and we've done that now. I mean, we, again, put out what we needed in order to maintain exactly what we were doing. And we heard that it was too much and that we needed to cut. We've cut. I, I've heard, rightfully so, from the parents whose children, students are being directly affected by those reductions. But I haven't heard is, was that enough? Is that, was that enough for the cry of reductions that we needed? Or are we going to put another, are we going to put the 13 and 1/2 out there and they're going to say, no, 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 you still haven't reduced enough? I, I don't know.
Where's the other 9 and 1/2?
Yeah. Or was the other 3 million that we needed? I, I don't know. That was a that, that's my concern, is that we've not had that chance to have that dialogue in the community yet. So I'd want to believe that we, 13 and 1/2, what everyone was paying before would be, would pass. But we also heard that people, I mean, you've talked about this a lot, Ms. Benning, that people have felt that they're with inflation, that without, you know, equal increases necessarily in some cases in salary, that people are feeling really strapped. We were asking for 13 and 1/2 million and they said they were strapped. Do we, do we need to cut more than the 6 million we've done? I don't know that yet. And we won't know that until we get out into the community more. So again, I, I'd like to believe that 13 and 1/2 would pass, but I have no reason to believe that right now.
What you say there really resonates with me because we've been, for the most part, focused on the top side of the, the top side, the revenue side of this equation, not the bottom side. You're right, I am still hearing, Eric, there's still opportunities to cut in this district. I disagree with that. I, to me, that's a value statement, but, you know, what do you value in education? But yeah, I'm still hearing that. There's still some, some meat on the bone to be taken. So, well, I hear you. It's a good point.
Eric, you mentioned a couple of times $9 million to do the other, I think you said, the other $9 million. Is there a, a $9 million cut I've missed somewhere that?
Nine and 1/2.
Nine and 1/2, is that the number that we're kind of?
So it would be seven and 1/2 of the remaining 13 and 1/2, plus the 2 million incremental that we
At least.
That's where it's coming from.
At least. It depends where, where you want the cash balance. Like I said, and we're looking at in 2027, a $13 million deficit. Just to maintain a cash balance of around 60 days means you got to cut 13 million. Right? Right, so it's nine and 1/2 buys you time, or eight or 10, but
In 2026, we would have received 15 and 1/2 million, not 13 and 1/2 million. That's, that's what we projected needing with the forecast.
And, and, and recognize that costs are not stagnant. You don't cut, you're not cutting 6 million off what we're spending today. You're cutting 6 million off what we're projected to spend next year. Right? Because you know, our natural gas, electricity, salaries, insurance, regardless, we don't have to do anything and they're going up. I mean, it's, it's the same thing that everyone else experiences, right? So, so it's, so it's a moving target. That's what you got to recognize, that you don't cut 6 million and 6 million is flat because you, you still have growth.
Okay.
Here's a tough question that I think we're going to see from people if we wait past, past May to put something on. They're going to look at all of us as a board and say, you've known since November 6th that we had a cut. And since that date, we've had the opportunity to have conversations, and we have not. What is going to be our answer to that? Because we're now at January 13th and we still do not have anything formed for having any conversations with our community.
Well, I think my answer to that is that we talked about the importance in our December meeting of community engagement, a committee that I appointed you to. So how's that going?
Well, since we haven't had a meeting yet.
Well, tomorrow, so tomorrow morning, we'll have our, the first board standing community engagement meeting. And I, I think, I, I've been functioning because until a week ago, we weren't looking at a we, we had, I, I thought we had agreed that we weren't looking at the May ballot for an operating levy. So while there certainly has been an importance to it, there has been a lot of the reduction work that was going on. I, I would love to be out there right now, but it's, it's not yet. But I, that was part of the reason, is that while it was important to do, it also didn't seem as timely as it did until the last week.
Well, I'll probably also add that on, if we, if it passed on, what's, what's the date in May? May 6th? It's not like the money comes in on May 7th and everything magically comes back.
We're still having to reduce.
This is still a, you know, a January 1, the cash would start coming in. So again, there's time to figure out what the right ask is and what the logistics of the Campaign Committee is. That'd be my answer.
So if we waited until November and it passed in November, would that money start coming in in that January? So either May or Jan, May or January, May or
Financially, it's the same, however. The point is, I think Ms. Benning's main net, if you pass it in May, you, you reduce that anxiety of what's next.
I would love to, again, I would love to reduce that, that anxiety. That would be great.
And you have the opportunity then to really, like the, the boosters and others who want to help, it's hard to have them help, but we don't know what the nut is, right? That's, that's the benefit of, of May, I think, to the point. Now, of course, you've, you got to pass it.
We are equally exposed to the criticism, the criticism. If it fails in May, why did you not listen to us and put an unthoughtful ask on the ballot? Again, we don't trust you. Forget about November.
Again, we're between a rock and a hard place. Going back to what Susan Roland Miller said, it was my understanding, too, that we were working on reductions. And the only ask we were going to have in May was for PI. Because we, I thought, as a board, we had talked about that we weren't ready to ask for anything else in May because we weren't sure exactly what was going on. And we knew that we couldn't put two on, a PI and an operating. You know, it's been, what, 10 weeks? Three of those weeks were holidays. While it seems a long time ago, it's been only 10 weeks. Again, you know, we have, I have people telling me all the time, what are you going to do? I said, well, what, what are your thoughts? You know, you can't put something on in May and a PI and something again in November. You know, there's, I think people are starting to understand and listen and go back, that we talk about all this at the meetings. You know, the community engagement, that was a big discussion, and I'm glad to hear that we're starting tomorrow. But you know, things, things can't happen quickly. It's quick as it's, in 10 weeks, I think a lot has happened. And we've been focused on how to get through and make reductions to, you know, to at least sacrifice some type of learning outcomes and learning experience that our kids have that'll look the same next year. And I just, I, I don't see it. I don't, I don't see that we're going to be able to pass a PI and an operating in May and then come back and without not knowing what happens until June, another, it could be a huge ask again in November. Well, you just passed for 9 million. Now you want this? Why didn't you know that back then? You're damned if you're doing, you're damned if you don't. And I just, I just feel that in looking at the numbers, that we're not, we can't put two on in May. What's more important right now? And what do we, what's our best bet to do what we need to do in May? And we've always been talking about the PI.
And for me, the most important thing we can do right now is take our time to listen to the community, to understand where is our shared understanding about what is, what is going to be the Perrysburg educational experience? It's not going to be the same, and that's, that's okay. I mean, it, you know, well, kids roll with stuff. You know, I, I'm concerned about the staff and the teachers because a lot of the cuts haven't, aren't going to directly affect students, but they are going to directly affect the workload of our staff. So there's a So there's a lot of things to consider and different people to listen to in that.
So it seems like what everybody's saying, not everybody, it seems like what could be said is, out of an abundance of caution and an effort to truly hear what the community wants us to present to our administration and the rest of the community, is to get that data first before we proceed with an operating levy. The permanent improvement levy presents its own questions as to, do we renew? Do we renew plus? Do we renew and add a plus? Do, you know, I mean, even the operating levy is, no, I'm sorry, no, even the permanent improvement levy is throwing?
Still haven't determined that.
Yeah, throwing enough monkeys into the wrench or wrenches into the monkeys, or however you want to say that, that is enough to make your head spin. Because a million and a half to take care of our buildings, right? Every year? I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you got a boiler that goes out and there goes 500 grand or more and?
To stick to the operating levy and not the PI levy, right?
Yeah, well, no, I mean, just the fact that we don't have that settled in our minds yet, and then to throw in the operating levy too, because we don't really know where that, what the community is asking us to do. And that's, that's a lot of questions on our behalf and responsibility that I don't think we have the data for, to responsibly throw something out. Even though it may sound so, I wish they wouldn't make us do this so far ahead. I mean, that's really hard. I mean, May seems like a lifetime away right now. Gosh, we're talking graduation. But how, we've got, we were forced by the electoral calendar to make this decision now, which is at least a month to a month and a half sooner than what I think we're all comfortable in having to do.
Well, I would like to, my last comment for the night is to, you know, thank you, Ms. Roland Miller and Ms. Menke for calling this meeting, to give this board at least a chance to talk about this. Didn't feel right either, just, you know, we talked about it in December, not letting, you know, kind of letting it go unspoken, undiscussed, right before the deadline.
So Randy, where, what is, what are we looking at here? Do we have time to noodle on this for the, we'd have to make a decision about the operating levy?
At this point, we would need something on the Monday agenda.
Monday, I mean?
Tuesday.
It's going to be, it's going to be tight. I mean, you don't have, again, the steps are a resolution of necessity. And I can turn that around in a day with our attorneys to get the language. That's, you know, kind of boilerplate. Then it goes to the county auditor, and they're quick, and they provide the ballot, the millage, and then we put the ballot language together to come back to the board. All right? That has to happen, and then on February 5th, by February 5th, I'm, you know, hand-delivering to the Board of Elections. So, you know, that's, that's the window. I mean, things can happen pretty quickly, and I have heard of cases, and I frankly, I've talked to Matt about this in the past, there's always the opportunity, he would come up for a board meeting, you pass a resolution of necessity, then we take a break and him and I go off in the corner and do the calculation and resolution proceed. But I'm not saying that, I can't speak for him, he may not be comfortable in this circumstance doing something like that. So it could be turned around quickly, but you only have, we got two, two weeks, right? A little over two weeks, if my math's correct. And so the question, I'm going to, you know, try to be the old guy in the room here, is what kind of day are you going to have in a week or two that you don't have today to put that together? All right? That's the, you know, it's one of those patent principle, general patents principles, is that you don't make a decision until you have to, but when you have to, you go with the data you have and you do it. And so the question I have, I'm concerned financially, you know, the anxiety of not having something on May is there, but whatever we do, it's got to pass, whether it's May or November. So, and you are paid the big dollars to make that decision. Tom and I can advise you, but I, you know, I can't, I can put the numbers up there and do what I, you know, what I believe is right from a financial standpoint, but I don't represent the values of this community like you do. And I think that's, it's a question, it's a values question at this point, looking at the cuts. Can we make more cuts? Yeah. But what don't you want? Right? Because every cut has a consequence that most people don't recognize.
Right. And it's got a domino effect.
I had a conversation with a community member today about that, and they go, why don't you cut this? Okay, we could do that, here's the consequences. Oh, I didn't know that. Because, you know, every job, every position has a purpose in the district. And I think everyone has to recognize that. What are, what do we value?
So when we make a resolution of necessity, is that, do we also have to have the amount with it so that they can figure out? That's my thought.
The resolution, the resolution of necessity, we put it, yeah, you got to put the amount and the term in it, and then essentially, then, then we, the county auditor calculates the millage. That's, that's, that's the key there.
As of right now, I don't hear enough support for the idea of putting this on the agenda on Monday, but we also have time. If, you know, as you said, we don't have to make, we would have to make a decision before Monday to put this on the agenda. Right now, I'm hearing that the majority of us, though, want to wait until November, and we've had a chance to really create a good plan after listening to the community. But that can change as well. But as of right now, I, I don't hear enough support to put it on the agenda. We could put it on the agenda?
I'm a definite maybe. I mean, I, I've got a lot of information tonight about it, too. I'd like to kind of, you know, do one of those balancing acts, the good news, the bad news, the yays and nays, you know, how, what does that, the pros and cons, that's the word I was looking for, to actually see and maybe talk to some of y'all over, over the weekend or, well, I'm not going to be very available this weekend, but to just kind of know. I mean, I, I really do, I see some good points both directions, like Laura and Randy are saying, the anxiety of the not knowing, and, but is that worth the risk of antagonizing the community again because we're throwing something out there? I honestly, I'm kind of spinning on this. I really am. I'm kind of spinning on it. Because I really thought that we had three really good propositions that we, that we proposed to the community, thoughtful, well-done proposals that, that tanked. And I'm, like I say, especially this spring one, really surprised me. So I need to, I don't want to make that same mistake a fourth time. And that's what causes me pause about all of it.
I'm not spinning as much as you are on it, probably, but if, and I don't know why I'm kind of writing this for you, you called the meeting, but, you know, Randy, you're a wise man. If you had a, you may be in your back pocket, want to have a resolution of necessity for 13 and 1/2 million for four years. I'm not saying it goes on the agenda, but hearing this Laramore talk.
We can put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
It can be a motion, we can.
Because tonight, we do kill it, tonight. I mean, if we don't give Randy and Tom some direction.
Well, do we want to, but that's the question. Do we do the 13 and 1/2 million? Do we break it down into smaller bites of the elephant like Susan was suggesting?
If you're, if that's where you're at, then we don't do it. And I would agree with you there, too. I'm looking for a path forward here, and I think what you just, you know, you were open-minded enough to want to do something, but you're now still like, what is that right about that struggle? I get it. So to me, that takes me back to, this is a November discussion.
And fundamentally, if you go less than 13 and 1/2, I mean, you're talking about, if you do another ask, whatever the case is, you got to prepare for additional cuts. So the question is, that 6 million, what the district's going to look like after those reductions? Are you comfortable, you know, are we comfortable with what that other consequence would be, right? So I just, I want, just think about both cases, is that if, if, if 13 and 1/2 million were a slam dunk, there'd be no, it's a no-brainer. And, but, and I don't know that it is, but it would be nice. Then that would give us at least a couple, you know, four years of the chew on it and be able to maintain where we are. And if the values of the community are such that they don't like, you know, the reductions in gifted education program and those kind of things, then you got, then you go back to that, you got that additional ask down the road. So.
So I'm looking at your cool graph again. So if we were to put, think about the 13 and 1/2 million in, in May, which would mean a slightly lower blue line than what it's, what's on there for four years, we keep the 6 million in cuts that we already have instituted, so it's really not helping restore anything that we've already lost. No new teachers other than those that are mandated. That gives you some, it gives you some planning and some, some room to work so that we're not looking at the orange line. Because currently, we're on the trajectory of the orange line.
Right. Right now, I would say that the patient is on the table and still bleeding. Given that, you know, we're, we're, we're not on the blue trajectory here, but we're still on the orange because nothing has passed yet. So, so, you know, passing something this next year, you know, would sustain the patient. And that's kind of, the 13 and 1/2 million or 14 million does that. And it keeps us above or at or just below that line, depending on the variables of, you know, the amount that the board would seek, and then all the other variables that go into state funding and those kinds of things, which we won't know. So I think, you know, we can put together some pros and cons based on this conversation and have that be part of the presentation on, on Monday. You know, I'm sorry, Tuesday, thanks. In terms of, you know, what we heard today and revisit the conversation if folks wanted to do that.
I guess my question is, if we were to discuss this again on Tuesday, what additional information? Is there any additional information we actually would?
Well, for example, I would like, if you are really interested, the problem is, the options are infinite, right? You got 13 and 1/2 and 14 million, that's kind of a baseline, you know, stabilizes the patient, gives us some time to fix the underlying disease, to use that metaphor. Sorry about that.
So maybe it's seeing that line as a 13 and 1/2 million and not the 14?
Yeah, I can fix that. The other thing is, let's say you want a 9 million dollar levy. I'm just, I could, I could run the forecast numbers with that, and you can, I could do the same, we can do the same type of projection.
And just to be clear, my assumption of a 9 and 1/2 million is that that's a starting spot, and then additional levy would go on in November of the right amount.
Well, again, that's the whole thing.
I'm not suggesting 9 and 1/2 million without additional funding.
Well, you use 9 and 1/2, and then four later, or eight and five, whatever those, all those things are options, right? So I think we need some direction to give you what you want to see, at least in terms of data, not what you want to see in terms of result. But what do, and more than happy to prepare whatever you need for Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, so if we have a, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think we need to, we need to see numbers. I mean, what's that going to look like? If we put something on the ballot in May, we're not going to get anything until January anyway, regardless, right? It's not going to happen June 1st. If we put something on the ballot in May and it passes, we still won't get any money until January, correct?
Yeah, but we already have that plan.
Right. But that's what, but if that, but people need to under, that has to be very clear, too. But what, what is the cost going to be to a homeowner? Will we be, would you be able to have that information on Monday if we did just, just say, you know, 9 million? And then 14 or 13 and 1/2? But then what would it look like in the fall? And what are those costs? Because it's going to be something in May, plus the PI, plus something in November, and there needs to be a total so people can see what that is, so that, I don't want anyone to say that they didn't know what the ask was.
Well, like, you know, that's a good question. Like a PI levy, if we do the straight renewal, there's no change.
Right, because we had talked about that at the last meeting, that you were going to have both.
I have both.
So we could see what that's going to be.
For example, the, the, the PI, you're talking about incremental, right? So even, let's talk about the 9 and 1/2 versus, 13 and 1/2 versus 14.
Slide, is that 25?
Right now, it's somewhere about 9.71 mils, 72 mils, somewhere in there, depending on your rounding, for the 13 and 1/2. That's 200 to 300ths of a mil less than if, what it was in November, okay? Most people are not going to notice that amount, right? It's so, it's so small. To go from 13 and 1/2 to 14, and these are Randy's numbers, and Matt and I have been really, really close, so I feel comfortable in sharing this, you go from 9.72 to 10.08, which is 0.34 mils, that's $11.90 per year for $100,000. So about a dollar a month, that difference between 13 and 1/2 and 14, is about a dollar a month per $100,000, right? But at 9.72, whatever that math is coming, I didn't calculate that, because that's, that's essentially replacing what was... So like the 9.72 is $340 a year per $100,000. So $300,000 home, which we're already seeing, people tell us on their tax bills, they're seeing a $1,000 reduction this year in their tax bill because that's what came off.
The bond came off.
No, the.
No, they.
Operating.
And then we have, and of course, then we have the bond issue, the last year collection on it. And, and so that's coming off, too. And remember, I got the, it'll be on the board agenda on Tuesday, the amount, but that is $60 a year for $100,000 that's coming off. So.
That's something that kind of worries me, too, because, you know, I'm not negating the fact that we've got quite a disparity between the blue and the orange lines here, but people are going to be getting their tax bills and seeing this nice reduction in there, and they may decide, I like that.
Well, that's why every, everything we do is now a new tax, which is what also concerns me.
I think one thing for the conversation to consider is, we've talked about how the benefits of being on in May. It gives us that stability, it gives us that, you know, the patient is stable and future discussions. But I also think that the board should consider what happens if the levy fails. Because the conversation the day after will be, now what? And I think that needs to be part of the conversation that you're having today as well. Because then, do you go back, you know, we had 5,000 voters tell us no, and now we're going to go back in May and, or, you know, from May with a no vote for 13 and 1/2 or 14 million, then what do we do in November? And so I think, you know, that, that becomes part of it. So as a, as a team, we have begun to work on the question of, you know, if, if nothing passes in 2025, what do we have to do to make sure that we have, you know, the funds to avoid going below, you know, that line? So we're working on that so we can share with the board and the community, in the event that there isn't a levy passage this year in 2025, here are the things that we'll need to do to continue to operate and avoid hitting that line. And that's where you're hearing about the 9 million to 13 million dollars of reductions, that, that work will reflect, you know, that range. So I, I think that's maybe the next part of the conversation, is if we do go forward with May and it passes... with May and it passes, great. We check the box and we can continue to have dialogue and do the things that we've talked about. But if that levy fails, then what does that say about November? Because if you run the risk of, you know, you go back with the same amount, well, didn't we tell you that answer in May? Well, 5,000 voters voted in May, you know, now we're going to have 16,000 voters. Does that, does that change? Or, you know, do you go in with a lower amount and then now we're making, you know, additional reductions and, you know, based on the results in May? Which, you know, we would have to be prepared for, you know, a smaller dose of reductions in May if the board went with a lesser amount or all of it, because again, we have funds that are riding on it. So, so I think that's the other thing, is just to be comfortable with, if the levy goes down, you know, what, what do we do? We have time to talk about that.
The levy goes down, you have, you'll be filing by August to be a November ballot. So it's not quite as tight as this timeframe.
Right, right.
But, you know, on May 7th or whatever that, that next day is, the conversation hopefully is, what's the next challenge? If it isn't, then we got, you got work to do. And I think, you know, you've talked about it here, we know what it is to maintain what we have. And we all think that's, I think we all agree here, there's a, that's a legitimate ask. But we don't, but you know, unfortunately, or fortunately or unfortunately, it's not up to the board. And the other thing, again, and my concerns, you didn't ask, but I'm gonna give them anyway, is, yes, I'd like to have it locked in in May so we don't have to worry about that last ditch effort in November. However, we've got the bandwidth of the levy committee and the ability to raise funds because this is not, it's not nothing and they've struggled to raise funds if I'm not correct.
Yeah, yeah. We, yes.
They, so you've got the levy committee, it could be the greatest decision in the world, but we don't have a way to support it because we can't fund, you know, the support, obviously. And then the, the other part of that is, we do have people, our athletic boosters, our music boosters and others who want to help get the gap. But that, but that, you know, going into next year, can they really help next year? Because without that funding secured, if that makes, if that makes sense. The gap's still going to be there, but we don't know what the gap is, this much or this much. So I can, you know, getting back to Tuesday, you just give, the board gives you direction, what you'd like to see in front of you on Tuesday. I will be more than happy to work with Mr. Hostler and, and bond counsel if necessary to prepare whatever you would like, you would like to see.
So what's the answer for the agenda on Tuesday? I'm hearing to have a draft of the resolution for necessity.
13.5 for four years.
13 and 13.5 instead of the 14? Why 13.5 instead of the 14?
Take it back to where it was.
Do you want to see any other analysis? That's, that's pretty straightforward, but if there's anything else you'd like to?
I'd like to see that then in a five-year, because four-year puts us on a, like a nothing election. I mean, it's, it's one of the, it's not gubernatorial, it's not presidential, it's just one of those in-between.
It puts you on the same, it puts you on the same cycle as the PI levy if you go five years.
That's what we're doing.
Okay.
And it wouldn't have to be 13 and a half.
I'd rather be at an election that people are going to show up for than.
You kind of outlined just a couple of looking ahead over the next few years of what that could look like. Part, part of the discussion the board had in June of 2024 ahead of the decision about the November election was that voter fatigue, that, you know, always coming back. So eight years was keeping it on the presidential cycle where the most people could vote. And that's why the board landed at eight years. And it gave time to talk about the other issues, you know, the, the growth and facilities and so forth. So if we do the four-year option, we took the liberty of just plugging in what that would look like. So in 2025, you know, that, those would be on the ballot. And then you would see us talking about reductions in '28 or '29 depending on the amount that the board would seek, or sooner if the board were to seek significantly less.
Or state funding changes significantly.
Right.
Yeah.
And so you see 2029, it would pop up. And, and then the next year, you would have the PI levy if we keep that five-year. And then you can see the five years, they land on the same year. And then if you were to do six years, you could see how that spreads out. So, so with four years, we're looking at in between, in the next six years, we'd be looking at one, two, four elections in six years. And then you can kind of see from there. And all of that would be for, you know, to capture, with the exception of this year, it would be the, the next, you know, three elections would be just to capture what was approved already. No, no additional funds. And if you do the additional funds, then you run the risk of where we are today and risking it all for, you know, a gain of a couple million dollars a year.
Well, does it make sense to look at the option, excuse me, the options that we've really talked about tonight? The 13 and a half, the 14 and, nine or nine and a half?
Nine and a half.
Nine and a half. Would it make sense to look at all three of those so that we would have the information that we would need to see what all three look like?
Well, you tell me what makes sense, but 13 and a half million versus 14, obviously I was more comfortable with 14, that's what I put in the forecast, I felt comfortable against the 2029. But at this point, I would take 13 and a half. If that was, if that was the bet that, that got us done, right? We could deal that. Then the question is, if you want to look at those other options, just tell me, you know, kind of what you'd like. Because again, how you split that, you know, it's kind of arbitrary at this point. I mean, you could run some, some models and you pick your poison. Anything less than, I'll make a 13 million in a new, in a new ask means there's some cuts coming, right? If you don't, if you don't pass that second, second piece. And so that amount that you're going to have to cut potentially is that difference between X and 13 and a half over, you know, through 2029. So it's how much do you want to, how much do you want to risk? You know, it's, it's what it comes down to, risk and reward. You know, what are we, what, what are we comfortable with, with, with risking? You know, for example, you know, I'm not saying this is the option I'd recommend, if, if I thought 13 and a half would pass solidly, I'd go, why not make 13 and a half continuing? The last PI levy, not last PI, the last incremental levy the district had, it turned into a PI levy that's continuing. There's a $13 million levy, I can't remember what year it went continuing, but it's continuing as a fixed sum levy.
Here's, here's the history of continuing levies. This was discussed in June, so I just brought that slide over.
Yeah, so the, it's 2016, that was an incremental levy that was made continuing at that level as a fixed sum levy. It collects $13 million a year, it's been collecting $13 million since 2016. It'll continue to collect that at this point. I mean, I'm not, I don't wrench in there, but I'm just, the thinking.
When I was originally thinking about splitting the nine and a half million, because that's just kind of our bread and butter money right now, that would have been continuing and then we would put on a fixed sum four or five-year in November. But again, that's three campaigns. So I, I do think that there's time to, this might be a time to lock in some long-term funding that we know is going to be needed. I mean, I can't imagine cutting all the way back to that or beyond that at this point. I don't think we really would in any way have the student experience, I'm not even sure how we would do that. So to me, the nine and a half million as a continuing was part of the scenario to at least lock that in and then talk about what is it that we need, what, what type of student experience do we want? And, and what will that cost us for the November ballot?
Yeah, 9 million is bread and butter. I would say 9 million is bread and margarine.
I grew up on margarine, I'm not that.
It's not quite, it doesn't, I mean, we'd have to make cuts.
Let me, you know, let me model a forecast with nine and a half in there and then you can see what the gap is.
I was trying to come up with a number that was rational, that could be a continuing. I don't, I would not go bigger than nine and a half million for continuing ask. So I'm hearing 13 and a half million at four years, and these are just going to be possible motions for us to approve.
Well, like I said, I got the, correct me if I'm wrong, I got the impression you're directing us to go ahead and get a resolution of necessity for, for 13 and a half. The question was four years or five years? That, that, is that correct?
Yeah.
To draft that.
To draft that.
Certainly for four.
Okay. And then the question is, do you want any other legislation drafted or do you just want some analysis? I want to be very, very, try to use our time efficiently, the time is tight. We can pull a lot of things off pretty fast if we have good direction.
What is, so 13 and a half million at four for the resolution, people wanted to see the 14 million and the nine and a half million cost, but no, no resolution drafted? I don't.
Okay.
Is that what I heard?
I don't know what we're hearing anymore.
Well, but we have to make a decision on Tuesday's meeting.
Well, I mean, here's, let's, again, if you said, talk about a Tuesday night, you want to do something other than what we've drafted.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we have a special meeting that week and I will, you know, bond council's pretty good, it's a template, turning it around and getting it, getting it in front of you.
So as of right now, those are the scenarios that we've discussed. It doesn't preclude people coming with a new scenario after giving more thought to it on Tuesday. But they're the scenarios that we've discussed that we want to talk about again on Tuesday. Enough scenarios?
Enough scenario, why four versus the five? Because I'm looking at the five as a compromise between the four and the six plussums. Again, going after the, the argument we've been beaten over the head with about the number of asks when you're looking at slide 19. The five-year looks like a nicer compromise between what the, what a four-year would throw at us.
Here's, here's, I'm gonna throw this at you, call it community engagement part. We've all heard, you don't plan, but eight years is too long, four years, right, but then you're not going to be able to plan long. So you're not going to win either one of those arguments. I think you're going to have to figure out and do what you got to do because you're getting, you know, right now, the feedback is mixed, right? I mean, the vote feedback was one way for the eight years and I think Sue, you made, I think it made perfect rational sense, but obviously, we did not able to communicate or convince people of that. You're going to have to pick your poison, I guess, is, and a five-year is equivalent to four in people's minds.
So again, five-year puts it on a presidential cycle? Is that, do I have my dates right? Or the four-year does?
Twenty-four, twenty-eight, that would be a gubernatorial.
Would be the four-year.
Twenty, no, nothing is.
Three years, three, three years would put us on a presidential, right?
That's right. Five years puts us on gubernatorial. So I'd be, I'd be more inclined to say five.
Yep. Sort of.
I was going to say, one of the big arguments that I constantly heard is we get to pick elected officials every four years, in some cases, every two years. Going further out, even though people complain because they are constantly going back to the polls, they feel better about going back to the polls in the long run. I mean, it's just, you know.
Some of our elected officials are six years.
Like your kid who's always arguing with you about eating his peas, they're going to constantly argue, but they know if they want to get up from the dinner table, they're going to have to eat the peas. You know, same thing with, with our funding. People are going to argue about it all the time, but they know if they want the services for their kid, they're going to have to say yes.
So 20.
And the answer is, they gave us was no.
Well, not all of them.
So 2030, if we did a five, that's a gubernatorial time, right? And 2032 is?
Here, this might help you right here.
So, Mr. Juror, can you help me if on Tuesday, we have a resolution of necessity that states 13 and a half million at four years, is it very complicated to change that to a five-year?
I'd have two, both of them prepared. I'd have both resolutions prepared. Because again, the resolution necessity, all it does is county auditor, calculate the millage. And then when, once that come, comes.
We can't amend that.
We cannot amend that.
On Tuesday, though, if you just had one presented and then we want to amend it. Because it just sounds like there's so many different scenarios right now that we're considering.
Well, I would, again, what I would do is have both of them in my pocket.
Okay.
That way, it's, the attorney is prepared, this sounds.
Okay, so we want 13 and a half at four years, we want 13 and a half at five years. Does anyone want any other scenarios prepared?
Nope.
Fix, and again, fixed sum levy.
Fixed sum.
Okay.
So not your split one?
No.
Okay.
And I think, I think, you know, Randy's point in working with the attorneys, it's really important that we get it right because we know our colleagues and, you know, in the district north of us didn't get the ballot language right and that kept them off the ballot. So, so it's important that we are very careful with that, so.
I like my job and I prefer not to be run out of town because of a typo in a resolution.
Dot your i's and cross your t's.
Any other discussion? And I'd like to move and I, without anyone saying otherwise, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Good? Thank you.